Good evening. If you would, please silence your cell phones. And please be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you that are physically present with us tonight in the council chamber, welcome. If you desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance. And if you would, once you complete it, turn it into our city clerk. Speakers physically present and anybody calling in or via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time. And each speaker is allowed three minutes speaking time. So at this time, I will call to order and convene the regular meeting for the City of Grand Terrace City Council. And tonight, we will be closing in memory of Centenarian Maria Candelaria Gomez. Keep her in your thoughts, please, and your prayers. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Daniel Penito of Living Word Inland Empire Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by our city attorney, Adrian Guerra. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sorry, it's my first time. Thank you very much for having us here. If we can all just bow our heads as we open up in prayer this evening. Heavenly Father, we thank you here today. We thank you just for the city of our, the beautiful city of Grand Terrace, that your councilmen and women and our wonderful mayor, that you may just bless them right now, Lord, that you may just be able just to give them the clear mind and just give them the right train of thought, Lord, for what's to come before them right now. We thank you just for all the counselors that are here this evening. We thank you for the beautiful residents of Grand Terrace and everybody that is here present. We also pray for the young lady, that miss that the mayor was talking about. And we just lift her up right now in our thoughts and in our prayers right now, that whatever she might be going through, that you just be with her right now. We thank you so much, Lord, just for your understanding. And yes, we do trust in you for everything that is about to come before us right now. And we just want to, and we just pray for our seniors. We pray for our teenagers. We pray for our middle-aged. We pray just for everybody that is, that is here present with the family or that is not present here, that we have somebody in our thoughts or somebody in our heart that we just need to, we just need to draw from you here today, this evening. We thank you so much. And we just continue just to pray for the city. We want to thank also for the beautiful law enforcement. And we pray for the law enforcement and the first responders, the paramedics, the policemen, the city officials, everybody that is here. Also for, for, for the ambulances, the paramedics, the firefighters. We thank you so much just for all first responders. And also, we also pray very much for our military, our president, and everything that we have in this chamber right now. We thank you so much. We honor you and we praise you, Lord. And we just thank you so much. In Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
All right. Madam City Clerk, you had something you wanted to say?
Roll call, please.
I could do that.
Councilmember Allen.
I'm here.
Councilmember Robles.
President.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Present.
Mayor McInnes.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson is absent. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. And I want to say a special hello to our county supervisor, Don Row, who is in the audience tonight. And our first item of business is a special presentation. So we have a certificate of commendation for Anessa Nessi Campos, who is a U.S. Deaf Women's National Soccer Team gold medalist. And so we want to help her celebrate. And we're so happy she's here to let us do that with her. You really have, you have really brought a lot of honor to our city with your, with your expertise. And so I'm going to read the commendation, but I would like you to come up to the lectern if you would, please. So I'll read the commendation. If you'd like, we'd like to hear a few words from you. And then we'd like you to come over here for pictures with us. And I will give you, I'll present to you what we have for you tonight. Okay? Whereas Anessa Nessi Campos, a native of the city of Grand Terrace, attended Terrace View Elementary, Terrace Hills Middle School, and Grand Terrace High School. And whereas Nessi played and volunteered as referee at the Grand Terrace Community Soccer Club. And whereas after graduating Grand Terrace High School, she was awarded an athletic scholarship to play D1 collegiate women's soccer at Eastern Washington University. And whereas after two years at Eastern Washington University, Nessi transferred to D1 Cal State University Northridge, where she is currently playing soccer and pursuing her Bachelor of Art degree in criminology and justice studies. And whereas the United States Deaf Women's National Soccer Team won the gold medal in the championship game of the 2022 Deaf Olympics, which took place in Brazil. And whereas Team USA defeated Poland in overtime to win the game and bring home the gold medal. And whereas Grand Terrace's own Nessi is a rostered player on the 2022 United States Deaf Women's National Soccer Team and has become the City of Grand Terrace's first Olympic gold medal athlete. Now therefore, I, Darcy McInnes, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members, do hereby thank and commend Anessa Nessi Campos for her hard work and dedications. Congratulations to Nessi and Team USA for an outstanding job. And this is presented the 28th day of June 2022. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Absolutely.
I can hear myself. I just wanted to say thank you, Grand Terrace City Council. And it means so much to be here with you guys and celebrate this. It means a lot to me. So thank you.
Thank you. Do my council colleagues have anything that they would like to say before we take our picture? Councilmember Allen.
Let me just say, well done, well done.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If you would come forward and join us up here. For recognition, we have a nice plaque. But because this is over and above a special achievement, we will be awarding a crystal key to the city.
Wow. That's awesome.
And because she probably won't carry that with her, we have a nice lapel pin that is in the shape of a key with our city, our city seal on it.
Thank you so much. Are we ready? Smile. Big smile.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be part of your celebration.
One more. And one last time. Thank you. You didn't want to tell.
So next on our agenda is public comment. Do we have any requests to speak during this time? All right. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not on our agenda. And so because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any items that are not on our agenda. But we may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. And that's generally the questions we would ask if we had them. Also, I may request a brief statement from staff once the comments are finished and they can address questions raised during public comment is how they will address them. And items may be requested to be agendas for a future meeting. So may we have requests to speak at this time? Thank you. First speaker is Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor McInnes and councilmembers. Johan Gallo, 22808 DeSoto Street, Grand Terrace. I want to talk about our business and event climate. And I sense a change. And I appreciate the work that our new city manager is doing. I've lived in this city 30 years. My wife has lived in this city 55 years. And every time I think about the events and the things that happened with businesses, I've known many business members that had businesses in Grand Terrace that left. They were just done. They moved to other cities or they just folded up their business altogether. And I'm hoping that what I'm seeing from our new city manager is a climate change on how business and events are held in our city. So I'm looking forward to this positive change. I think it's well overdue. And if anything else, the Blue Mountain City should be the friendliest place to do business, to open a business, and to be a resident. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Mr. Glenn Kendall is next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'm here at, trying to give some insight to code enforcement or the lack of. We've had issues with parking. Our neighbors are coming down and throwing big parties, live on a cul-de-sac. And this weekend, we've had cars parked double and tripled wide, and no one's coming by to check on them. Street sweepers coming by probably 15 miles an hour. And because cars are parked on the street in the cul-de-sac, the street sweeper makes a sweep 15 feet from the curb, doesn't hit anybody's stuff. And there's no code enforcement following, writing tickets. And it's been that way at least three months this year so far, probably more. And I'm disabled, and at times I have to use a mobility scooter to get around. I've got probably six or seven pictures where there's constantly cars blocking driveways over the sidewalks. There's travel trailers parked where the tongs are hanging out over the sidewalk where it makes it difficult to get around. One guy has a, like an old U-Haul van parked up against his house where it's out into the apron of the driveway. And then his grass is cut away about three inches from the cement, making a trench where I could get a wheel stuck in the stuff. So it makes it very difficult to get by with. I could show pictures of it to validate what I'm saying, but I don't know if it's, anything can be done. I've came in and made comments about five times now to the people inside the office. And we never see any code enforcement come by later following up on what we've talked about or that I've presented to them. So I don't know if anything can be done. It doesn't seem like it. It's been all falling on deaf ears. So I know everybody can't watch everything at all times, but, and it's always out of the normal business hours of when things happen, that you guys go home and then the party starts, you know? So anyway, that's just my issue, and I just wanted to make you aware of it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendall. I appreciate you taking the time to come down here. And I believe the city manager is going to, to make sure that he has a way to contact you to follow up.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Scott Welcher.
My name is Scott Welcher. I live right across the street from Glenn, and I'm backing up his play. It is ridiculous in our cul-de-sac. I've lived here 46 years, and it's getting really, really bad. Within the last two years, maybe three years, I never see an officer cruising the neighborhood. I know there's two in the, in the, in the city. They never come. We got new neighbors right next to him, straight across from me. They park three wide. It's getting way out of hand. They had a whole bunch of four-wheel drive trucks there this weekend. I watched Glenn go to leave. Glenn barely got out. He barely squeezed in between all the cars. When they were all leaving, they all burned rubber all the way around the corner. It's really, really bad. No officers. And if I call, no officers. The house to the right of me, they got two junk cars in their driveway. One of them's leaking brake fluid. That's caustic. That's very bad. Nobody cares. So they park behind those two cars. They're blocking the apron. We have a lot of young ladies walking their kids in strollers or walking their dogs. They all have to go out in the street. That's totally ridiculous. The street sweeper, he comes and does half of my house. Goes out in the middle of the street and goes all the way in the, way outside. Doesn't even get Glenn's house, doesn't get nobody else's house, mainly because of the house to the right of me. I've called and called and called. I'm tired of calling, so I'm here. And I'm hoping somebody's listening to me. But that street sweeper, he comes in, he does not have his spray bar working. He dusts everything. He comes in at least, at least 15 miles an hour. Where's the code enforcement? I guess they don't like eating his dust. Where are they? I've called and called, and I'm sick and tired of calling. Nobody's doing a thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welcher. We are listening, and so is the city manager. So he will be following up on this with you and your neighbor. All right. And our final speaker is Juanita Odenbaugh.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city councilmembers. I'm here. For the record, I live at 21811 Vivienda Avenue in the city of Grand Terrace. Just below me, I live on the bluff. You decided to vote yes to a truck and trailer storage. And during the proposal for the appeal, I looked it up, and that was in August of 2022, August 25th. And on the proposal, it simply states that all the vehicles, and I even have it recorded if you want to hear it from Steve Weiss. He says, plain and simple, no truck access, wait, hold on. Truck access is only from Barton Road through Terrace Avenue. That's the only way to access this project. You know, as well as I know, that I have many pictures and I send them to you all. This weekend, there was a large RV, over 40 feet, that came down my street. And now it's parked down at the trailer storage unit. I just wanted to simply know why it's there. Is somebody living there? Are they having security issues? That wasn't part of the plan that was proposed. He was supposed to only have security cameras. Another thing that was proposed but fell short is your signage in my neighborhood. If you look at the proposal, under facts, you, the occupant proposed that he was going to be putting two signs up on Vivienda Avenue, Terrace Road, Walnut Avenue, and Terrace Road that says, no truck access. Instead, you blatantly have put in three signs in my neighborhood, and I want them down because they do not belong there. They were proposed, other signs, and they're not up. You're making it up as you go along, just like the medium. And I need it to stop. None of this was in your general plan proposed. Look back at it and look at it yourself, what you proposed and what you agreed to, because it's not reality. The reality is, the developer is using my street. And he plainly signed off that he was going to be using Terrace Avenue. And this is a continuing issue. And I don't know why we keep on having these issues. So I just want to clarify that all you can look back, I'll send you the video if you'd like. It's, it was proposed, and the reality is, again, you're not following up on what was proposed. And you said yes to this, and you need to follow up on what was proposed. So please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Odenbaugh. And it sounds like we still have work to do. Mr. City Manager is hearing you. All right. And that's our last request to speak. So we will close public comment. And we will move on to our new business. We will be going through a process to appoint three planning commissioners to fill three, four-year terms that expire June 30th, 2022. So the process we will follow is that the city council will be given a container that has the names of all of our applicants tonight that will be here to be interviewed. And the first applicant will be interviewed. That person will remain in the council chambers. And the remaining applicants will go to our community room and wait for a member of staff to escort each applicant as it is their turn to be interviewed. Applicants who have already been interviewed may remain in the chamber. So we have six questions for the council to choose from. Or the council members may be asking their own question instead of one those that are suggested. The time allotted for each applicant will be as follows. We will ask you to give us an introductory statement, and you will have a minute to do that. You will have two minutes for each question that is asked by the council. And then you will have one minute to make a closing statement and summarize whatever you'd like to summarize. And so upon completion of the applicant interviews, the council members will select their top three appointees. We have the ballot in front of us. And we will hand those to the city clerk. And city clerk will then tally the votes and make an announcement about how each council member voted, and the combined top two vote-getters will be appointed. I'm reading what's in front of me. So the third one isn't at large. No. The, the top three vote-getters will be appointed to the three vacant seats. All right. So before being sequestered, all applicants will stand by the lectern, and the city attorney will ask all applicants to respond yes or no to some questions before we proceed with our interview. If you would come forward at this time, please, to the lectern. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I will be asking the full group some yes or no questions. Basically, say yes or no after each, ask each question. I have five questions. The first one is, do you understand that the planning commission is not an independent governing body, but rather a body that reports to and is subject to the authority granted to it by the city council? For example, the planning commission is an advisory body to the city council on matters of policy and a quasi-judicial body on certain land use decisions with appeal rights to the city council? Yes or no?
Yes.
Second, are you available to meet the planning commission required attendance, the minimum two meetings per month? Yes or no?
Yes.
Third, are you willing to commit to the training requirements of the planning commission, which includes regulated and state mandated training? Yes or no?
Yes.
Fourth, are you able to commit to technical training that may require you to travel at least once a year? Yes or no?
Yes.
And lastly, are you aware that as a member of the planning commission, your ability to make public comments may be limited because some land use items may be referred to the planning commission? Yes or no?
Yes.
We are complete on this end.
All right. Thank you. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. For your information, you have each drawn four names. Two of your, the names on your ballots will not be participating. We started with Councilmember Allen, so that will be one. Mayor Protem will be number two. Mayor, you'll be number three. And Councilmember Robles, you'll be number four. But if you could please remove Michelle Norris and Vincent Rasso from your ballot, they did not attend. Thank you.
And so I see Mayor Protem, who you have as the second. And Councilmember Allen, will you show me yours? The, the name that you drew? Okay. So that's number one. And you have, okay. All right. So our first interview, interviewee will be Ed Giroux. Our second will be Scott Mathis. Our third will be Aaron Buren. And our fourth will be Brian Phelps. And so, Mr. Giroux, you will stay here, please. And we have not chosen our questions yet. So Mayor Protem, do you have a preference as to the questions on the list, or would you like to ask your own? Councilmember Robles.
I'll take number six.
Okay. Councilmember Allen.
Number one. Oh, wait, Bill, I've got that. So.
Do you have your own? Okay. I will take number two. So, Mr. Giroux, as I, just a refresher, I'm going to ask you for an introductory statement. You'll have one minute for that. Each of us will ask you a question. You'll have two minutes for each question. And then we will give you one minute to make a closing statement or summarize or, or maybe give us some information that you thought we should have asked you. All right. So we will begin first, Mayor, Mayor Protem.
Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, sir.
And on question, please explain your interest in serving on the planning commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community.
Well, my interest in public service started many years ago. I'm an immigrant to this country, and I brought it here by my parents so they and their children can have a better life. Because of these opportunities, I started at 18 years old in public service, working for a few different law enforcement agencies with my last employer for 37 years, 11 months, 22 days, and three hours and seven minutes. It was 8:07 when I walked out the door. When I retired, I was the most senior employee for the department, as well as the sergeant. While the planning commission, I have a background in traffic. So the reasons why I feel I have a benefit for the planning commission is I have a background in traffic, highway design, the housing element, land development, and obviously the last eight years as a commissioner for this planning commission. Most importantly, I care about this community's future, and I enjoy serving the people of Grand Terrace and this city council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles.
Please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to 10 years.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, within the last few years, our residential development in our, in our beautiful town here has been hit pretty hard by some head-scratching mandates from the state, whether it be
I will take number two. All right. So Mr. Giroux, as I, just a refresher, I'm going to ask you for an introductory statement. You'll have one minute for that. Each of us will ask you a question. You'll have two minutes for each question. And then we will give you one minute to make a closing statement or summarize or maybe give us some information that you thought we should have asked you. All right? So we will begin first. Mayor Protem.
Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, sir.
And on question, please explain your interest in serving on the Planning Commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community.
Well, my interest in public service started many years ago. I'm an immigrant to this country, and I brought it here by my parents so they and their children can have a better life. Because of these opportunities, I started at 18-years-old in public service, working for a few different law enforcement agencies with my last employer for 37 years, 11 months, 22 days, and three hours and seven minutes. It was 8:07 when I walked out the door. When I retired, I was the most senior employee for the department, as well as the sergeant. While the Planning Commission, I have a background in traffic. So the reasons why I feel I have a benefit for the Planning Commission is I have a background in traffic, highway design, the housing element, land development, and obviously the last eight years as a commissioner for this Planning Commission. Most importantly, I care about this community's future, and I enjoy serving the people of Grand Terrace and this city council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to 10 years.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, within the last few years, our residential development in our, in our beautiful town here has been hit pretty hard by some head-scratching mandates from the state, whether it be the renal numbers, SB 9, or the new, excuse me, the new objective design standards. I'm confident our community, especially with the staff that we have, can objectively address these mandates, even if required some compromise. My primary concerns for the mandates will be the increase in traffic due to the multi-housing and the mixed housing use development, and the increase in utility demands. We're already suffering sometimes with blackouts, rolling blackouts. For the commercial development area, it's the infrastructure to support the commercial zones. There's some commercial zones surrounded by residential zones in our community. And this will create a conflict with the certain types of vehicles used to drive through these residential areas to get into the commercial areas. However, I believe we can fix all these things through the staff and further development.
So how long have you lived here, Ed?
Since 1998.
So I want to ask you something, then. If, as you look back on the last 22 or three years or so, is Grand Terrace where 20 years ago you thought, are they on that direction? And are they where you thought they should be, even maybe when you joined the Planning
Well, I believe the spirit of Grand Terrace has been the same. We've got multi-generations that still live here in Grand Terrace and still believe in the spirit of Grand Terrace and moving forward. One thing you can expect is what state mandates are going to be developed and put down on you. But I'll take into consideration how our community is designed and what our community stands for. We're primarily a bedroom community, and there's been mandates put on us to strain our ability to continue that sometimes. Our infrastructure is strong. We have the wiseness to be able to move forward in that area. So as far as my projection for the future of Grand Terrace, I believe we'll still remain a multi-generation community, as well as a good-spirited community. A lot of our neighbors care for one another, whether you live on the west side, east side, or close down to the high school. Most of the people, when you meet them in the stores and everything, are very generous, very nice, very nice to get along with. So I haven't felt a change pre-commission or my time during the commission, other than folks know who I am and know that I'm on the commission, so they'll talk to me more about stuff. But other than that, I don't think there's much of a change.
So it sounds like you like where Grand Terrace is and where it's going?
Well, there's always room for improvement.
Sure.
Councilmember.
But nothing's perfect.
But nothing is perfect. And we're not going to be able to satisfy everybody. But if we're going to survive to be our own, there will have to be some changes. And some of the changes have already been mentioned in one of the questions that was asked by Councilmember Sopley.
Thanks a lot.
All right. As Planning Commissioner, what is your role in implementing the city's 2030 Vision Plan?
Well, I support the five goals. And as a commissioner, I would support safe and well-managed development to support the natural beauty and the recreational opportunities of this community. And as a result of that, you're going to have the support of the quality of life here that fosters pride and engages the community, which in turn encourages, as I was talking about earlier, generational mobility with people staying here. In addition to the 2013 plan, I think the best example I have to give today for why it worked was with the roundabout. With the roundabout, we were able to create, open the communications with the community. We had the town hall meetings. As a result of those town hall meetings, people discussed their concerns, and those concerns were addressed and in the design of the element, of the design element. So my goal with the 2013 plan, even though what the mandate's coming down on us, there's still room for us to work and stay within those mandates and work with our 2013 vision.
All right. Thank you. Now, I beg your pardon on this one. I did not give you your minute introductory. I would, I would like to give you that minute back at the end here. So for your closing statement, I would like to give you your extra minute. So you have two minutes. And if you want to tell us a little bit about your strengths that you're bringing and give us a summarization, or maybe tell us something that we should have asked you.
Well, as I mentioned, I'm an immigrant to this country, and I've been living in this town since 1998. And this has been the longest time I've ever lived in one community since, most of the time I lived in one area, short time, moved on, moved on, moved on. So the community, to me, is enough to make me want to stay. My wife and I are adding to the house, so we're not going anywhere. We raised our seven children here. You know, they went to school here. We go to church here. They participated in sports here. We're, my wife and I belong to a civic community here in town. We also participate in a lot of the community activities to push them along, get them We have our 13 grandkids, so we're not going anywhere. So I'm going to be here for a little while longer. And I'm kind of looking forward to the next four years with the Planning Commission if I get appointed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Giroux. Our next candidate is Mr. Scott Mathis. Now, Mr. Mathis, I inadvertently did not give Mr. Giroux his first-minute introductory statement, but I added it to his wrap-up. Would you like the option of having two minutes at the end, or would you like to give us an introductory statement to begin with?
We can stick with the normal routine.
All right. Thank you. You have one minute.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor McDebo and councilmembers. My name's Scott Mathis. I lived most of my life in the Inland Empire, and for the last 12 years, I've lived here in Grand Terrace. In many cities, that would make me a long-timer. I understand here in Grand Terrace, it puts me in the middle of the pack. I teach physics at Indian Springs High School in San Bernardino, but that's my second career. Up until five years ago, in fact, for 27 years, I worked as a professional geologist, consulting on land development and infrastructure and environmental remediation projects throughout Southern California, but mainly in southwestern San Bernardino and western Riverside counties. So I'm familiar with how we use land in this part of the country. I look forward to being able to bring some of that knowledge and experience and apply it here in my own city of Grand Terrace.
All right. Thank you. So we'll begin our council questions, and we will start with Mayor Protem, Bill Hesse.
Hello, Scott. Please explain your interest in serving on the Planning Commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community.
Okay. My interest in serving on the Planning Commission is, well, honestly, it's self-interest. This is my town that I live in. I own a home here. I plan on staying here. So I'm very interested in seeing Grand Terrace continue to grow and thrive, both commercially and as a good place to live for residents like myself. As I mentioned in my introduction, I do have a background in land development consulting, and a portion of that would be relevant to service on the Planning Commission. I think I can bring a perspective and an experience that is not only a resident and a concerned citizen, but also some technical expertise that may be applicable.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to 10 years.
Excellent. Grand Terrace is a mature city in the sense that a lot of our space is used. Our residential space is largely developed, with the exception of redevelopment and some infill parcels. So the main opportunities are commercial and industrial development, specifically within the Barton Road specific plan. And within the Commerce Way project. In the coming years, the biggest opportunities are going to be to attract businesses that not only build the tax base here in the city, but also serve the residents with services and retail that they may need, but also provide jobs for residents, too. So I kind of went around in a circle there. But the commercial development in the remaining undeveloped portions of the city are the main opportunity in front of us.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Hey, Mr. Mathis. Hope you're having a good evening. With the amount of time that you've lived here in the city and what you know about the city itself, are you satisfied with the place where the city is now? Do you think that it has gotten to a good point and that it's on the direction that it's going is right? And if, and if not, I'd be happy to hear why?
Okay. If you had asked me that question five years ago, I would have said, no. Nothing has really changed since I moved here. There are vacant businesses. There's very little development I see going on. But within the last five years, a lot's happened. I can walk down the street and eat at Taco Bell now. I couldn't do that a couple of years ago. When I drive into the city, it looks nice instead of just another nondescript boring off-ramp. There are new businesses. It's not very recent, but Stater Brothers moving to the new facility really changed when you come into the front part of town. And now we have all of the development going on, including the current construction with Wingstop that I look over every night as they're wrapping up and listen to the beeps. I think we are heading in the right direction now. We needed development. We still need redevelopment. There are still too many vacant businesses here in the city and opportunities that aren't being met because there are things sitting there for a long time. So I'd like to see those move forward. But I think we are overall headed the right direction.
Thanks.
As a Planning Commissioner, what is your role in implementing the city's 2030 Vision Plan?
My role as a Planning Commissioner, selected, would be to review proposed projects and staff recommendations and input on those, and compare them against the 2030 vision, and look for how well they conform to that plan in areas where there's possible problems that may have been overlooked or opportunities that could be realized in addition to what's already planned. And then, working with the commission, make recommendations back to the city council regarding how to move forward with that, and also to work with staff to make recommendations on improvements to make proposed plans better for the city and better for the businesses coming in, because it has to go both ways.
All right. Thank you. And you will have one minute to make a closing statement or summarize or give us information that we should have asked.
Okay. First, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and talk to you. This is an interesting process for me that I've never done before. If selected, I really do look forward to the opportunity to use my past experience and my time I've spent in land development and community improvements to work here in my own city so that my own future, as well as all of our futures, can have a better home to reside in. So thank you for that.
And our next candidate is Aaron Burian.
Hello.
How are you?
Doing great. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to give you one minute for an introductory statement.
Okay. My name is Aaron Burian. My wife Claudia and I moved to Grand Terrace in 2018, and I'm looking for an opportunity to volunteer and give back some of my knowledge of engineering to the city and help out, however I can.
All right. Thank you. We'll begin with council questions. Mayor Protem, Bill Hesse.
Good evening, Aaron.
Good evening.
All right. Well, please explain your interest in serving on the Planning Commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community.
Okay. I have an engineering background. I'm a partner at an engineering firm in Redlands. I've been in that industry for 20 years. I've worked alongside developers, and so I have an understanding of the, of the customer side of development, along with the engineering side. So I think that would be beneficial to the city to apply that knowledge.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Hi.
Hello.
Please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to 10 years.
I believe there are a lot of maintenance issues in the city that need to be addressed. There's a, there's definitely a space limitation on future developments in the city. So I think the Planning Commission could help in choosing proper developments that could benefit the community. That's about all that I can think of.
Okay. As a Planning Commissioner, what is your role in implementing the city's 2030 Vision Plan?
My role would be to adhere to the protocols that have been established as a part of that, that vision plan, and help develop that plan further when necessary to, to adapt to conditions that are occurring within the city. And, again, apply my experience in, in the engineering field to decisions that are made.
Thank you. And so you have one minute to make a closing statement.
Oh, okay. Oh, Mr. Allen.
I miss Mr. Allen. Councilmember Allen.
I'm invisible. Thanks a lot for applying, you know, and coming out. I, I heard that you said that you moved here in 2018. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. We moved in May 2018.
Yeah. I don't know if you had any knowledge or had ever, you know, passed through town before or perhaps had friends or family here and had been through. But in the, you know, two, three years that you have lived here, and what you know about our, a little bit about our history, are you, are you satisfied with Grand Terrace where it is at now, after 40 years, and the path that it's on? And if you're not, then let me know what it is that you're not.
I, I am, I am satisfied. In, in 2020, when COVID first hit, I made a huge project of putting in a fruit orchard in our backyard. So I'm digging in, and I plan on staying here. Sure, there are, you know, issues with any city, and like I was bringing up, the, some of the street maintenance and things like that are an issue, but I know that's funding-driven. So I don't, I don't see anything in this city driving me out of here at all. I really like it here. We chose it for its central location, and we think we made the right choice, for sure.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Now you have one minute for a closing statement.
Okay. I would like to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to apply for the appointment to the position. And I hope that my experience in engineering would be something that's appealing to the city to, to let me help out and volunteer. I really look forward to it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burian.
Thank you.
All right. And our final candidate? All right. Staff member went to escort him back in. All right. All right. And our final candidate, Brian Phelps.
Okay.
So you'll have one minute for an introductory statement.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council for the record. I'm Brian Phelps, resident of Grand Terrace. I've lived in Grand Terrace since 1974, when I was two years old. I've moved away several times, but I love the city too much not to always come back to it. Part of your task tonight is to determine how we will process the information provided by the applicants and the statements made by the public. As a former Planning Commissioner, I have previously demonstrated I am able to process the information from outside sources and the public at large. On all of the committees I have had the privilege of serving on, I have rarely missed a day. I am reliable, trustworthy, persistent, and definitely don't have any surprises or personal agendas. I am here for the city I truly love and am proud to be part of making it the best it can be.
So we'll have council questions, starting with Mayor Protem, Bill Hesse.
Good evening, Brian. So the first question is, please explain your interest in serving on the Planning Commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community.
I've always loved serving my city and the satisfaction that serving brings. As a former Planning Commissioner and as someone who has grown up in the city, I understand the culture, the history of our fine city, and am invested in seeing it continue to thrive. As a previous Commissioner, I've truly enjoyed seeing the projects that came before us come to completion. come to completion and contribute to making our city better. The skills I have to contribute are that I know Grand Terrace and its residents very well. I have been a part of the city, its clubs, its events, and for most of my life. I know the residents and I believe I can represent their needs better than most. I truly love my city. I want to see it become the best it can be.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to 10 years.
Sure. The new SB 9 mandate is going to be tough to navigate to make sure that it doesn't have a negative effect on our, negative impact on our city's housing values. The Blue Mountain Trailhead project will bring much-needed access to a natural landmark and resources for recreation in our city and the region. Continuing the Barton Road specific plan to improve our main thoroughfare, the general plan update of which I have participated in when I was previously a planning commissioner, and seeing Grand Terrace Gateway Project visual, realized and also realizing the goals of the 2030 vision plan.
Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. So, Mr. Phelps, thanks for being here and for applying.
Thank you.
And you've lived here a long, long, long time. More, longer than most, like you said, and I respect that. And so I'd like to ask you, in all the years that you've lived here and you've watched development here in town, you've watched the city grow and the direction it's gone, are you pleased with that? And if you, and if you're not, I'd like to hear, you know, why you might not be satisfied with where it's at now or the path it's on. Or if you are, that's fine, too. And, you know, to talk about, you know, your sentiments on this direction that it's been on and it's going.
Sure. We've always been a small town. And with small town, there's definitely some difficulties. Most of the time, we've always been a bedroom community. And so our housing is almost completely filled out. There is some little pockets here and there where we can add a little more housing. But realistically, for the future, I would say our retail, commercial, and that development will help add to our city's tax basis and to improve our city. If we can do it right, it'll be great. Somebody once said that we are what like Orange County used to be 30 years ago or 40 years ago. And we're gonna, we're gonna grow. We just have to do it smartly and do it well so that we benefit from the new development that comes through.
Thanks a lot.
As a planning commissioner, what is your role in implementing the city's 2030 vision plan?
Well, my role in implementing the 2030 vision plan is to make sure all projects coming to, before me, to meet the goals of the 20, meet the goals of the 2030 vision plan. The project needs to be fiscally viable. It needs to maintain public safety. It needs to promote our economic development. And as a commissioner, I would need to encourage successful partnerships with public and private agencies. And as a commissioner, I need to promote transparency like the Brown Act aims to accomplish, which I strongly support, and engage the public as much as possible to ascertain the public's needs.
Thank you. You have one minute for a closing statement.
Where did I put it? Thank you for the opportunity to come here today and to interview for the planning commission seat. It gives me great joy to serve my community. I have always received great satisfaction from serving a city that I truly love. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Phelps. And so at this time, council will mark their ballots. And our city clerk will come forward and collect them. We will take a five-minute recess. We will take a five-minute recess while she tallies the results. I want to thank each of you who have come tonight to stand and be interviewed. I appreciate your desire to want to serve your city and for taking the time to come and interview with us. Thank you so much. We are in recess. Five minutes. All right, Madam City Clerk has indicated that she is done. So we will reconvene to open session. Madam City Clerk, what are the results?
Thank you. Councilmember Allen, his top three votes were Scott Mathis, Edward Giroux, and Brian Phelps. Councilmember Sylvia Robles' top three were Edward Giroux, Aaron Burian, Scott Mathis. Mayor Protem, Bill Hesse's top three, Edward Giroux, Brian Phelps, Aaron Burian. Mayor Mcnebo's top three, Edward Giroux, Scott Mathis, Aaron Burian. Therefore, the top three vote getters were Edward Giroux with a total of four votes, Aaron Burian with a total of three, and Scott Mathis with a total of three.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, gentlemen. We look forward to having you serve us. As I said, I thank all of you. And Mayor Protem had made the statement, and I totally agree. I wish we had more openings so that we could have you all serving on our planning commission. Thank you so much again for your time. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. And I hope that you do. We only have one more bit of business. And so we'll get back to our agenda. Our last item of business to move forward with, we have our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted on by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or resident may request the removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove an item?
I'd like to remove number eight.
Okay.
For discussion.
All right, any others? All right, is there a motion for the balance?
So move for the balance of the consent calendar?
Second.
All right, before we vote, Mr. City Attorney, if you would, read by title only, Agenda Item E4. That's the Revised Special Event Ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Repealing and Replacing Chapter 8.50 Special Events of Title 8 Health and Safety of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which updates the city's special event regulations. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Robles. A second by Mayor Protem. Please vote. We are voting on the consent calendar minus item eight.
Councilmember Allen.
We voice vote? Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I fell back into my old ways, so for just this time. Councilmember Robles.
Oh, we're doing the roll call?
If you don't mind, I have to reset it.
We're just gonna go with it.
Mayor Protem Hesse.
Okay.
And Mayor Mcnebo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously and I'll reset the display.
All right, thank you. So a word of contract for capital improvement project. Mr. City Manager, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, this is actually pretty exciting. So this is the money from the last couple of years because we didn't do any paving last year and then this year to do some, and we've got the comments from a couple of the planning commissioners, to do some needed work on the streets. So we will be paving Barton Road from basically the, where the new pavement stops there in front of McDonald's up to Mount Vernon and through the intersection because intersection's pretty rough as it is. And then we will be paving Mount Van Buren from Mount Vernon down to the tail end of Van Buren. And once again, that's probably, we picked probably the two worst streets that have the most traffic, the biggest potholes. There's a place on Van Buren where people during the winter can't even walk across the street because of the, we have to call them the dive rescue team because of the potholes. So this is a real opportunity for us to make a big dent on these really bad streets. We put it out to bid, got three very qualified bidders. Hardy Harper, Hardy Harper is a, they're not local, but they do a lot of work in the area. They've done work for neighboring cities. So they're a very qualified company. And we plan to, assuming you approve this, we plan to be paving by the end of July and have, just be a distant memory by the early of August.
All right, thank you. Questions of staff? Okay, Councilmember Allen.
The intersection of Mount Vernon and Barton, the pavement right there in the intersection has a design in it, I believe, doesn't it? Is it a stamped design or is it actual brick?
Stamp concrete. We'll preserve the stamped concrete. And then we can grind around it. Basically, it's a grind. We'll take off two inches, grind off the top, and then relay asphalt over it. And driving it, we may, there's some alternative bids that we probably will not use, particularly around Vivienda and the school because the school's doing some work here in the next couple of years and it just seems poor form to pave asphalt and then tear it up in two or three years. So we may use some of this alternative money. And disco 30 or 40 feet farther up Barton because there's that little patch just on the other side of the stamped concrete that's a little rough and we can use that as part of the alternative.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. City Manager, can you explain to the residents where the funds are coming up for this project?
So it's coming from a couple of different areas. First, the city from our regular general fund puts money away for paving. And then secondly, probably the biggest piece is Measure I money, which is gas tax money. So part of every time you fill up your tank. And gas tax is good right now because it's based on the base price. So, I don't know, none of us are happy about paying it. But there is gas tax money and this is coming from the Measure I for that.
The Ward of Contract to Welding Inspection Service for $30,000, do we, we can't do that in-house or is that recommended out of house?
We do not have a public works inspector. We have a building inspector, but that's a specialized trade in doing public works type inspection. He looks for slopes and flows and how the asphalt ties in next to the concrete. And it's a special deal.
It's a liability beyond them for the inspection.
We do have to do some kind of inspection, yeah. We can, as much as I'd like to and just kind of say, yeah, we'll do it and save the 30 grand, we have to do that, yes.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any requests to speak from the public on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, see, no. We'll close public comment and bring it back for consideration of a motion.
And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for item one, two, and three on Agenda Eight.
I'll second that.
That's item eight? Items one, two, and three of item eight?
Yeah, he was talking about the staff recommendations for item eight, one, two, and three, correct? Okay. Okay, so I have a motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Councilmember Robles. Roll call vote? No, we're ready, we're armed, okay. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no unfinished business. We have no request for future agenda items by the city council. So we'll move on to city council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Well, Mayor, I didn't attend any official functions since our last meeting, but Independence Day is coming up and that's on 4th of July. I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays for Independence Day. And because for the, we won't see you until the, until after that, I want to again thank the applicants for planning commission. It's great to have a full crew now again. And so, and isn't it great having an Olympian in Grand Terrace? Thanks, Mayor.
Absolutely. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Yes, I just want to thank the council for journeying in memory of Maria Candelaria Gomez. Her son Mario Gomez has lived in Grand Terrace for a number of years. I never knew Mrs. Gomez's name because we never dared call her elders by their first name. She was my Catholic school teacher. She was very stern. She could give you a look and scare the hell out of you. But being who I am today, I was back then. So I would kind of go around the edges and try to make her laugh or ask stupid questions or do whatever. And so I finally got her to crack. And she had a nickname for me in Spanish called trenzas, means braids, because I had two long braids. So that was her way of saying the little bad annoying kid. And she's just one of those people that volunteers, like many of you people out here, have volunteered for a community and really in her passing leaves a strong mark of reverence. She was a really outstanding woman. And so again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, once again, thank you for the candidates that came out, you know. Some of you have been up here before, just, you know, we appreciate everything you do in this city and you're a blessing. So one other thing is, since we have a, Scott, do we have gold in Blue Mountain? Since you, you're a geologist or something, do you find that? I'm just wondering when you were saying that because I hike those hills and stuff in sandals. I was wondering if there's any gold up there. Okay. Surprise, all right. Another thing, kind of a thing, you know, I know we had a couple of gentlemen talk about the streets and how there's blocking and, you know, the parking. And I experienced this even at the VA, taking my 89-year-old grandfather in wheelchairs, how people park and what an inconvenience it is when they do block the sidewalks and they're parking because they have a lot of vehicles and they decide they want to, you know, just convenient themselves. So I'm just asking residents, you know, just think of other people because those sidewalks are used, if you're fortunate enough in your neighborhood to have sidewalks, they're used for elders to walk, they're used for families with strollers, they're used for handicapped. You know, just be cognizant of everybody else, you know. Just if you have to park across the street, park across the street. But don't park in the driveway where it blocks the sidewalk, please. Another thing, 4th of July is coming. Of course, you know, we do have sometimes it seems like a war zone around us with the fireworks that go off. But please, you know, keep, carry your pets, make sure they're tagged or ID or have a license. Lock them up in the house, you know. Unfortunately, we do get a lot of strays. But, you know, important, you know, just be safe, you know, on those fireworks and support our local youth sports to have their firework booth here. But, you know, just have a good time and, you know, enjoy your independence and celebrate. There's a lot of countries that can't celebrate their independence or their freedom. And we're blessed to have that. So I just want to wish everybody a happy independence and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The only thing I will say, I have not been to any official meetings to report on, but I will say how much I appreciate our residents who have, who have reached out to staff and didn't get the appropriate response that they were expecting and for them to take the time to come and raise their voices and let us know that we need to do better. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the candidates that came and spent their time with us today. And with that, I will ask the city manager for his communications.
So with 4th of July coming, that also means that there will be a rave on the 3rd of July. It's a one-day event. So we'll all get our earplugs for both the fireworks and the rave coming up. Sorry, correction, the second, not the third, the Saturday night. We got the house down there on Barton Road. Even the rubble is gone. When I drove past earlier, they were picking up the last of the foundation. So we have vacant lot where we had a problematic house. And I want to thank the property owner and the developer for finally taking care of that, getting that out of the way. Really appreciate that. I know there was some comment about signs going up and coming down. But we have, we're ahead. There are more signs up than came down over the weekend. So we will be replacing the ones that came down and meeting with the group out there and getting some resident input and really trying to tailor what's going on so that everybody gets what they need out of that. And I think that is... And, um, I think that is, that is it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have closed session tonight. We will be meeting in closed session for one item, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Title City Attorney. And so if you are not with us when we return, please remember Maria Caldera, Calderaria Gomez in your thoughts and prayers. And our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda, a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. At this time, we are in recess. All right. We'll reconvene to open session. Council met in closed session for consideration of one item, which was Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Title City Attorney. We have no reportable actions. We did give direction to staff. And so with that, we will adjourn and we will be closing in memory of Maria Candelaria Gomez. Please keep her and your, and her family in your thoughts and prayers. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to our city clerk's office and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.